Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Michael Dever, Director of Republican Courts of Cuyahoga County, and currently the Chair of the County Planning Commission. Thank you for attending today's meeting. We are recording this meeting, so please speak clearly and if you can, state your name when, if you're called upon to speak at the meeting. With that being said, I think we'll go around the room for our roll call.
Yes. Director Han. Mayor Brennan.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Director Dever.
Here.
Mayor Orkut.
Here.
Mayor Prosech.
Here.
Mayor Sellers.
Here.
Councilperson Simon.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is organizational meeting. Mary, are you leading one?
So at this organizational meeting in your packet, we did have the meeting schedule for 2023, so we'll need a motion to approve that meeting schedule, and then we also need to confirm or reconfirm the vice, the Chair and the Vice Chair.
I can make a motion to approve the minutes from November 10.
Oh, sorry. We have to do the, I'm sorry, the meeting schedule.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The meeting schedule.
Meeting schedule for 2023.
Do you want me to make a motion to approve the meeting schedule?
Yes.
Okay, so move.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thanks.
Okay, so I'll make, I can make the other motion to approve these minutes from November 10.
Not yet, sorry.
Oh, I'm, okay, listen, I'm.
Have to get, the Chair and the Vice Chair.
Okay.
Need to have a vote on that.
Can I move forward to nominate a Chair? I nominate Mike Dever to continue on in his good work as Chair of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Wow, thank you very much. Is there any other further nominations from the floor?
Motion closed.
Motion to close the nomination. So on that motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, we're taking nominations for the Vice President of the County Planning Commission, and I'll make, I'm sorry, I'll defer the council to Mayor Brennan. And I second that motion. Any other further nominations?
Motion is closed.
Motion is closed?
Second.
Okay, so on that motion to appoint Councilwoman Simon as Vice Chair of the County Planning Commission, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. No, I enjoyed this. I'm enthusiastic.
I agree with that. Okay, so next item on our agenda is to the approval of the minutes from the November 10th meeting.
Correct. Do you have any comments from the public on that?
No, no comments.
So no comments from the public, so on that, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that motion's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstained. Abstained. One abstention, that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll roll right now into comments from the public.
No comments from the public.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so we'll go to item number five, actually, the resolutions required by board approval.
Thank you. We do have a number of resolutions in front of you today that require your approval. We know this is a probably the longest packet we've ever sent out, so we appreciate your patience on getting through this, and we will try and be as efficient as possible. So our first resolution is number 230209-a, Sanctuary and Preserve Olmsted Township. Megan Chaney, one of our senior planners, will be presenting the information today.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. This resolution pertains to the sanctuary and preserve of Olmsted, plan residential development in Olmsted Township. I'd like to point out a few people in attendance today. We have trustee Janine Kress, as well as Anthony Valori of Valori Homes, and Jim O'Connor from Polte Homes. Valori Homes, one of the two developers, Valori and Polte Homes, is requesting modifications to the approved master subdivision plan. To provide a little bit of history, the current master subdivision plan was approved in 2020, and it proposed the creation of 136 single-family residential sublots to be built in five phases, with phases one, three, and four being built by Polte Homes, and two and five being built by Valori Homes. So Valori Homes approached us with a few proposed modifications that would impact the master subdivision plan. These modifications include the rephasing of Phase Two, to be split into two subphases of 2A and 2B, with 2A going ahead of Phase 2B. Phase 2A involves the creation of nine sublots, and 2B would be, would have 18 sublots, both for single-family detached homes. It also includes the modification of the planned intersection in Phase Two, going from a roundabout to a traditional T-shaped intersection, and that modification impacts four sublots in Phase Two and Phase Five. The four sublots change a little bit in shape and have a little bit more room, a little bit larger. So you see there, the old Phase Two is now split into those two phases, 2A, 2B, and here's a close-up of 2A with the nine sublots and the modified intersection. And you see on, right at that intersection, those lots budding the intersection have changed shape just to a very minor extent. So those proposed modifications would have rendered the existing master subdivision plan inconsistent with the final plat that would have been proposed for the newly proposed Phase 2A. So Valori Homes submitted an application to modify the existing master subdivision plan, and also submitted a new preliminary plan for the newly proposed Phase 2A. We received those applications and circulated that to the appropriate reviewing agencies, including Public Works, County Soil and Water Conservation District, as well as the township, and received feedback and recommendation to approve, subject to a number of conditions, and I won't go through all of them here, but most importantly, Valori Homes needs to go through the same kind of update modification approval process at the township level, and submit the revised master subdivision plan back to us. Also included is an updated nationwide permit required by Soil and Water, and a few updating, updates to the improvement plans, plans that will be associated with the new Phase 2A. I would like to mention that there are no changes whatsoever to the number of lots, the layout of the lots, the layout of the roadway, just the design of some aspects of the roadway. So once all those conditions have been met, at that point, Valori Homes is able to meet with Public Works for a pre-construction meeting and begin building those improvements in Phase 2A. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Go ahead, Mike.
Curious, what was the rationale for changing from the roundabout to the T-intersection?
I believe construction costs of the roadway, the roundabout required more pavement, so the thought was to create a more streamlined design of the roadway.
Thanks, go ahead.
Anything else?
I don't know if Mr. Valori or gentleman from Polte have any comments?
Yes, we do. My name's Tony Valori. Yes, it started out to be a pretty aggressively exciting project, and then the whole world shifted, and with the pandemic and costs and everything else. And Polte put in their first 38 lots, and they now put in their second 28 lots. Part of that, being put in, submitted, they needed a secondary access, which was going to go through our property and then out to the street. So when they went to do that, they had to go through several different studies to see how they could do that. Well, we in concert agreed that it probably made more sense if we could at least put some of ours in, which would give them the secondary access and eliminate that need for them, and also, this would help bring down the cost for us, because jointly we could do some of these things together. The roundabout change, it was again was driven because of dollars. When interest rates went up, the whole marketplace had shifted dramatically since we started this. So the intent was not to stop, just try to make sure how we could get through it and not slow Polte down. So we came to the conclusion, if we could put in these nine lots, change the intersection, raise the grade on the intersection, and redesign it so not driving itself to Eastern Mason to help with the costs, we elected to submit it to you at this point, and hopefully you'll see the reason why, because it's going to benefit Polte, the homes that are in there now, which I don't know how many people already moved in, but we'd like to keep the whole project going, and this is a way we could do it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions first?
Originally, there was a contingency that the one development be completed first, and then you would be able to build the lots. Was that how originally was anticipated?
Yeah, originally, they were going to go first with their 38, and we're going to go with our 27, and then everything started to change. And so we backed off, because we're just little local guys out here in Westlake, you know, and Polte's a little different than us, and they went ahead and put in their next lots, finding out we have to put in some secondary access. So we thought now would be good, since it's going to have to do it anyhow, ours, it'd make more sense to just try to do it one time, instead of them trying to go out another road or get variance and everything else. It just made more sense.
Did you need to get approval to do that? Because I thought originally.
So, yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. I might jump in here. We, so there's a regulation in the county subdivision regulations that you can't have more than 50 dwelling units on a single access. So if you recall, in September, Polte came back because they were moving faster than Valori was, and wanted to petition the Board for a modification that would allow their Phase Three to go ahead of Phase Two. We have a regulation that phased developments need to go sequentially according to the phasing plan. We allowed the one-time modification contingent on the fact that they only build, that no more than those 50 single-family sublots were created. So Polte is in the process of developing that Phase Three. They aren't submitting for final plat approval yet, but that Phase Three would be in excess of that, the combined total would be in excess of Phase One and Two, or One and Three would be in excess of 50. So Valori is trying to accommodate them by building, by splitting that Phase Two and just building the Phase Two and the associated lots that would accommodate that second entranceway.
Thank you. I remember, so there's a cap at 50 now.
Correct.
This modification, is that a regular, or is that something we've done before?
The cap at 50?
Well, the modification to allow the twos not going in.
Oh, yeah, I believe, since I've been on this, this is the first time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And we're consistent with the law on that?
Correct, yep. It provides the subdivision regulations, and of course, we vetted everything through the county law department.
Okay.
Allows for modifications to the subdivision when it won't present any kind of danger to health and human, or to human health and safety, and that's where that cap of the 50 came in. So we were okay with that, as long as it caps at 50.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, hey, thank you. Any other questions? I'd like the record to reflect also that Director Wong has joined us. Any other questions, comments? No, I see trustee Kress is here. Trustee, do you have any comments or anything you'd like to say?
You know, we like to show up. We like to know what's being said, and we always like to say thank you very much for your participation in what happens in Olmsted Township. It means a lot to us. That second layer of oversight is very, very important. We also value the services of the Planning Commission. Megan's done a great job for us. She's hands-on. Mary's always in the background. Thank you so much. The township has no objection, and our planning, our zoning commission will be meeting on the 23rd, and that's basically to determine major or minor modification. Then it will come to the Board of Trustees, and we have already, I think we've already sent you all of our comments, and we are ready for the next phase. So once that meeting is over, we will take action at the following meeting. We have no objections.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mike, and thanks to all of you.
Thanks. Okay, if there is no other further questions or comments on the resolution itself, 230209-a, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next four resolutions on our agenda relate back to the planning grants. If you remember, we opened up planning grants for communities, and we had 14 applications, and were able to award four this year, and so the team here will be presenting each of those. We've got the City of Euclid, Fairview Park, City of Warrensville Heights, and City of. It's where I live. Okay, so with us today is Rachel Novak, one of our senior planners, resolution number 230209-b, City of Euclid, Citywide Active Transportation Plan. Rachel.
All right. Thank you, Mary. So yes, I am here to talk about the Citywide Active Transportation Plan for the City of Euclid. So just a little bit of background on kind of why the city wants to undertake this initiative now. So Euclid is really beginning the process to create that Citywide Active Transportation Plan, and through their application, we pulled out a number of key issues that they would like the Active Transportation Plan to kind of look at. So one of them, obviously, Euclid has a ton of amazing assets within the community, but they want the Active Transportation Plan to not only connect its residents to these amazing assets and throughout the community, they want it to connect to neighboring communities. They want it to be a tool that can provide larger regional access to these amenities. Second there, the city has really started to see some consistent growth in the amount of people who commute by public transportation and walking. There are actually significantly higher concentrations of folks that use public transportation in the City of Euclid than in Cuyahoga County as a whole. So we're really starting to see, you know, lots of active transportation, lots of public transportation users in the City of Euclid. Also, we updated their master plan, I believe that was 2017, and where it calls for expansion of safe, non-motorized connections throughout the city. So it's a goal of their master plan that we also helped develop, so a really critical goal there. But also, and really most importantly, it's vital to the city's commitment to addressing racism as a public health crisis, and creating an equitable quality of life for all residents. So city council and the mayor have deemed racism as a public health crisis, and they really want to use the Active Transportation Plan to get some nodes, get some connections to the residents, especially the most vulnerable populations within the community, children, seniors, those in poverty, to make sure they have connections to these assets as well. So this might look familiar to some of our other types of plans, but really, the thing that's going to make the Citywide Active Transportation Plan for the City of Euclid different is it's going to have a very robust and diverse community engagement process throughout its six phases. So the city really wants to take meetings out of City Hall, wants to take meetings out to the community. So we really want to make sure we're meeting the community halfway, not always having them come to us. We want to go to them. So we're going to have some really fun and unique community engagement opportunities. We're still kind of outlining what those look like, but through each of these phases, we're going to have different pieces and parts for the community to provide feedback, whether that's online or in person, whether it's walking tours. It'll be a great time to get out into the community. So our first phase, introduction and setup, you know, that's really starting to understand the community, get the website set up, you know, on our homepage, current conditions, where we're really going to start doing our homework on the community, understanding all of the data, starting to compile and gather all of our maps, understanding all of the trends, what's happening in terms of active transportation in the community. Then we start to outline the vision, so we'll be interviewing stakeholders, we'll have focus groups, you know, a group of students, so high school seniors, a group of senior residents, those 65 and over. Businesses will want to make sure we're reaching out to Amazon and understanding how employees get to and from work. Can they do it? Do they have a hard time getting to work on time? Those are the types of questions that we want to have answered. And then when we get into recommendations, that's kind of the meat and potatoes of the plan. This is where we're going to start outlining those actions to achieve those active transportation goals. Implementation, we'll identify partners, priorities, potential costs for some of these things to really start making some of those projects happen. And then conclusion, we'll combine everything into a completed Active Transportation Plan for the community. So what we are asking from you today, we're requesting the approval for Professional Planning Services Agreement with the City of Euclid. Total estimated project cost about $105,000 with the City of Euclid contribution not to exceed $10,000. We estimate the work to be completed well before December 31st of this year. We're actually going to be shooting kind of early mid-fall. They would like to use this plan to submit various applications which have deadlines coming up in the fall timeframe. So we're really going to look at kind of that September, or I'm sorry, October timeframe to have this wrapped up for the community. I'm here for questions.
Rachel, is the city approving this contract or agreement concurrently with the county? Are they, are they already in the process and?
Yeah, so the actual contract language, they do have a draft copy, and they are running it by their own law department as well as city staff.
Sounds great. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Just a quick question. So what kind of transportation are you looking at? I mean, bike lanes? I mean, obviously, bus routes would be helpful, but that's RTA. What exactly are you envisioning, potentially?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great question. I think once we get into that community engagement, we'll understand facility types a lot better. We can certainly look at data and maps every day, you know, and all day. It really is us getting into the community, understanding kind of what those needs are, maybe working with the GCRTA to understand maybe there is a better alignment for a route. You know, there are quite a few existing bike lanes, but maybe those, some of those bike lanes are better served by trails and vice versa. You know, maybe there are locations where trails might not be the best option, and that's okay. You know, maybe there are opportunities for bike lanes and connecting into some other neighborhoods. There's also great opportunities with a number of those neighborhoods, streets to do, consider bicycle boulevards. So streets that are, you know, have a relatively low vehicle threshold, you know, there's not too many cars using it, relatively low speed limit, so 25 miles an hour, an opportunity for just education and signage, improving the look and feel of a street versus going in there, jackhammering it up, and implementing a whole new infrastructure, when the infrastructure's already there, and can handle something like a bicycle boulevard. So really making it more of a pedestrian, bicycle-friendly street, instead of going in there and really putting in millions and millions of dollars of improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. If there's no further questions, I'll make a motion to approve 230209-b. Do I have a second?
A second, Director Wong.
Thanks. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, opposed. Thank you, that motion passes.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay, the next resolution is 230209-d. This is the City of Fairview Park, Lorraine Road Corridor Revitalization Plan. Micah Stryker, one of our senior planners here, will be leading the project, and I will actually take it away.
Thank you, Mary, thank you. Thank you for having me here today forward. So just a brief overview again of this. Again, part of the community grant program, Fairview Park is applied for Lorraine Road Corridor Revitalization Plan. This would be a comprehensive or cohesive plan. They've had some smaller studies, or maybe more targeted studies that don't cover the whole corridor, so they want something a little more cohesive along the entire corridor to guide revitalization of that corridor. It's roughly three miles long, and it's kind of the main commercial spine of the community. It also has significant multifamily and their civic facilities along this corridor. It also would be concurrent with some additional studies along Lorraine Road that are taking place in North Olmsted, as well as some projects and studies going on in the City of Cleveland. So again, thinking about this corridor as a complete, not just an island in the city, but being concurrent with those other studies as well. And as well, the County Planning Commission is working on a trans-oriented development study that the city has been heavily engaged with, and so hopefully being able to pull some of that over into this study. One of the other issues, again, community engagement, very big part of the plan, especially for them engaging their business community, local businesses, people that live and own businesses on the corridor, live in Fairview Park. So engaging them, educating them on also another aspect of tax increment finance district that they are planning on implementing. So kind of court meshing that with this, in the implementation of this plan. Throughout the, from their application and through the initial discussions with the city, there were four core planning issues that were identified. Again, the first one is infrastructure and transportation. As a corridor study, obviously, the physical infrastructure of that road is very important. So thinking about, you know, a road diet, is that appropriate, looking at sidewalks, connectivity, again, transit along that corridor, how can people get through there or get to businesses and things along the corridor? And then how does that TIF district, how does that get implemented? How can that be impactful there? Second is economic development. So again, engaging the business community, but also studying, you know, the economic structure of that corridor, and where there are strengths, and where there are opportunities for growth along the corridor, and how we can engage the business community to help them reach that. Third issue is corridor identity and branding. So it's a long corridor. It's not just Fairview Park, but thinking about those assets and character traits that can define that corridor, and how those can be strengthened, how those can be built upon with some of these other issues, such as looking at, you know, the businesses, the infrastructure, but also, you know, the physical environment and some of those issues. So, and again, thinking in coordination, or at least thinking along with the concurrent studies, and not just looking at, again, as an island, but as a long corridor that stretches through the western part of the county. And then finally, land use and zoning, thinking about the physical design of buildings, but also the development standards, and how those, do they help the community? Do they meet the community's needs for the type of development they want? Thinking about, you can open space, be incorporated, and also, you know, how does that TOD element fit into it, and are there places where that would be appropriate and can be made? But, and then finally, developing some build-out scenarios, so kind of trying to show them what is possible along the corridor based on certain conditions or certain, certain goals they're trying to meet, and showing, as one of the staff members put it, inviting the community to imagine what the corridor can be. So not just, you know, giving them a lot of data and stuff, allowing them to see what it can be. So. This, again, for you is a request for approval of Professional Planning Services for agreement with the City of Fairview Park. Estimated budget of $95,000, City of Fairview Park would have a contribution not to exceed $10,000. It would be completed by the end of the year.
Okay, thanks, Micah. Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to, oh, I'm sorry.
Just to add, as a neighbor, you know, we're at the City of Cleveland, we're eager to partner and consider that border.
Just a follow-up question. So North Olmsted, I just read something that they were doing. I'm not sure, is it a beautification along Lorraine Avenue, or are they doing a similar study?
They're doing, I believe, a TLCI. Is that correct?
They are doing a transportation study along the length of Lorraine Road through North Olmsted. It is focused more on transportation and less so on some other aspects. They did hold a first public meeting, and will be holding future ones going forward. The first public meeting was last week, which we attended.
I think just to expound on that, Fairview Park previously did a TLCI transportation-focused study, so they're a little bit ahead of North Olmsted at this point.
Any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is resolution number 230209-d, City of Lakewood, Madison Park Master Plan, back with us, Megan Chaney, senior planner.
Logan. All right. So City of Lakewood has submitted an application for Madison Park Master Plan, like the other projects that just went before. It will rely on an in-depth community, oh, I'm sorry, I'm ahead. It involves the evaluation of the evolving needs of the community and the surrounding neighborhood. So the Madison Park Master Plan will assess the existing needs of the facilities, the infrastructure, the programming of the park, and everything will be done through a community wellness and equity lens for this project, like most of our projects. It will also attempt to reflect the current needs and values of Lakewood's diverse and diversifying neighborhoods. The recommendations will be tailored to the surrounding residents, which include a good number of low and moderate income people and households, also many households that rely on alternative forms of transportation. And then we'll be aligning those recommendations with those found in previous plans that impact the park, including the Birdtown Master Plan, Lakewood's Climate Action Plan, and its community needs assessment that was done through the ADA. As I said before, it will rely on community and. As I said before, it will rely on a community engagement process that's both targeted but diverse. And that means that we're going to be targeting very specific groups that, that impact the park, that visit the park, that rely on the park, as well as having open community meetings that will be advertised to, in such a way that we make sure to engage a diverse population. The six phases of, of this plan will include the project initiation, developing those project teams, those focus groups, those stakeholders, and, and reaching out to gather information, setting project goals. The current conditions, as I said, will rely heavily on previous plans and, and make sure to coordinate recommendations with those previous plans where possible. Current conditions will also evaluate demographics in Lakewood and surrounding neighborhoods to help develop the, the needs and the goals relevant to this master plan. The park vision, how, how the community would like to see Madison Park change in, in the near and less near future. And as I said, those recommendations will be vetted to city staff, to the stakeholder groups, through the community engagement process. The implementation plan takes those recommendations and makes sure that they are practical and gives a path forward to the city in terms of priority, in terms of easy steps, and will supply various funding streams and opportunities that the city can take advantage of. So the request is for professional planning services with the agreement of, services agreement with the City of Lakewood. The total estimated project budget is $85,000 and City of Lakewood is able to contribute $10,000 of that. And work is estimated to be completed by December 31st, but we are hoping to wrap things up by the end of fall. You know, we figured that would be a, just as Madison Park begins to slow down, we would like to have the project wrapped up as well.
Thanks, Megan. Any questions or comments from those of the commission? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second by Mayor Brendan. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, our final project of a community planning grant is resolution number 230209-E. City of Warrensville Heights Parks and Green Space Base Plan. Nicole Laird, our planner here, is leading this project.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The background for this is that the City of Warrensville Heights is developing a new park on the site of the former John Dewey Elementary School. It's near the corner of Emery Road and Green Road. This, this park is needed for, to speak to a number of issues with the closing of three of the schools. So it kind of bridges the gap between open spaces and playgrounds that existed before. And so this is going to be able to create a new space that is intergenerational so that more families, more people of all ages can use it. The city also wants to speak to the concerns of the community about health, health factors and mitigation. Just to make sure that health is paramount to this plan and to the members of the community. And with this park, to promote healthy lifestyles, it's going to be an addition of walking trails for all ages. Develop multi-generational, intergenerational spaces for seniors, children, all that live in the community and also to encourage community involvement and engagement. Like the other plans, we're going to rely heavily on community input. We want to make sure that this is a community-driven plan. We want to make sure that the community has input because this is a plan that they are going to use. So the first part is for plan initiation and setup. Our goal is to use the current conditions in the next plan to identify the demographics, to use those demographics so that we can, we can kind of tailor our outreach to make sure that we're trying to get as many of the community as possible. Next step is vision. Next after that is to make recommendations based on the vision and the community outreach that we're going to conduct, implementation and use all those phases to wrap it up into a conclusion. Our request is for the approval of planning services agreement with the City of Warrensville Heights. The total estimated project budget is $85,000. And the City of Warrensville Heights' contribution is not to exceed $10,000. Work is estimated to be completed by December 31st of this year. And like the other plans, we hope to finish well before that sometime in late fall.
Thanks, Nicole. Any questions or comments for Nicole?
I'd like to make the motion for approval on this.
Motion been made.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mayor Orkut. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. State, I'm sorry. Thank you, Nicole. Appreciate it.
And you can, obviously you see a theme there with active transportation, corridor studies, parks and green space. When we did the survey of the community, trying to find out what their biggest needs were, this came through loud and clear. This is something communities need to focus on, given COVID and the desire of people to be out and about and really enjoy the amenities of the community. So we're very happy to be able to take these on. And the other thing I would just note is trying to get these done by the end of the year. Where you think back to master plans and efforts that we've done that sometimes take two years plus, we really do have been being able to get through these planning grants within the year and then be able to, you know, have new planning grants.
Thanks. Looks like the next item up is Jennifer.
And of course, well, none of this would be possible if we didn't have funding. So I'd like to just thank the county for their continued support. And with that, I will turn it over to Jennifer Karafa, sorry, manager of business services to give us an update on our fiscal.
Well, thank you, everyone. Yes, I'm Jennifer. And I'd like to walk you through how county planning ended our 2022 budget year and look ahead at our current operating budget. So I was just here in November and I gave you an update then. So we have more specifics to move forward with. I can tell you that we had started a new biennial budget with an approved budget of about $2.85 million. And that included salaries and benefits for 20 full-time employees and about $1 million for another round of the Healthy Urban Tree Grants. However, adjustments were made throughout the year, which resulted in a final budget, which totaled just over $3.2 million last year. Okay, that final budget did include a shift in funds from our salaries to benefits because of increased healthcare costs last year. And it also included some additional appropriation in that contracts account. So column C, that's where it shows you our year-end totals, which are actually lower than both the original approved and that final 2022 budget. You can see that in total, we spent down about $2.75 million. We had expended all but about 10% of our total personnel appropriation. We ended with $1.65 million in expenses there. That resulted in a variance of about $157,000. And that is attributed to a lot of turnover and vacancies that we experienced last year. We had a planner position which was filled in June. And then another one, a senior planner, which is still not filled and that's been vacant since March of last year. That lower personnel cost also reflects turnover. So we had an intern who got promoted to a planner and we had to replace our GIS technician. So that was filled in third quarter, but you know, a lot of movement within that salaries, yet we still spent 90% of it down. In terms of non-labor expenses, back in November, I had estimated that county planning would spend down most, if not all of those accounts. And sure enough, we did come in about 60, I'm sorry, 96% of our supplies budget, which is only funded at $5,800. And then we spent down 98% of our operating and other expenditures budget, which is funded at about $34,000. Where we largely underspent last year and where we forecasted that biggest variance was in contracts. So this variance is about 24% below the budget. It's roughly $300,000. And it's from contract funds that weren't issued in 2022. So county planning was holding in our operating budget dollars for the Urban Tree Grants. And about two-thirds of those dollars of the balance, the $300,000, is from that 2021 Healthy Urban Tree Grant awards. Okay? They were contract balances from reimbursements that weren't requested or not substantiated for us to process payment before the end of last year. But we are closing out all of those grants this year. So we will be done. We're very happy about that. Moving on. So by year end, we had a lot of changes that had occurred and that were impacting our 2023 budget. One of which is county planning's positions became classified. And many of the salaries were adjusted up to be in line with those classifications. There was also an across-the-board market wage adjustment. And that was an increase for most all of our full-time permanent staff. This averaged about 6.5% and it was issued in mid-fourth quarter of last year. Our 2023 budget was also adjusted to include this year a 3% cost of living increase. And again, the county was projecting higher healthcare costs. So that was put into the new budget. All of these factors were not part of that original adopted biennial budget. OBM recently added $132,000, intended to cover that difference that we'll need this year. However, they did calculate that value based on occupied positions and not any open positions that we currently have. So here is a look at our 2023 operating budget, which is funded at just under $3 million. Once again, our largest expense is our people, with both salaries and benefits comprising that largest component of our approved budget. This operating budget was originally built with another new round of Healthy Urban Tree Grant funding. But I will be transferring those dollars out of this operating account. And it's finally resting in a new lifetime budget. So then the remainder of our appropriation covers our operating expenses, such as supplies, employee expenses, and then any other operating expenditures. Those budgets have all remained flat in recent years and they collectively total about $40,000. So while county planning's operating budget is funded exclusively from the county general fund, our agency does generate revenues from outside sources and departments that we serve here at the county. We invoice our clients for those professional planning and zoning services and then we deposit those revenues back into the general fund. So at year end, 2022, county planning recognized total revenues of about $285,400. Not bad. The Office of Budget and Management is actually forecasting that this year we'll post about $178,000 in outside revenues. I did take a look at, over the last four years then, our outside revenue collections have averaged just under $200,000 annually. So it's likely that we will land somewhere between OBM's forecast and our four-year average. So in closing, I will just say that we are encouraged by our growing but strong team here. We're doing a lot of good work and I think even resuming our community planning grant programs that you guys just approved is great. So, thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Question?
Curious, because we've been striving to get more outside revenue and interaction with the communities. Why is it forecasted over $100,000 less than what we did this year, this past year?
I am not sure how OBM calculated that. In fact, in recent years, they have not forecasted for us an expectation. So it's not that it is driving our work. It's more of an internal thing and it is not even feeding the budget. Because that was my first question. Is that supposed to fill the gap? And it is not.
What were the outside revenue collections? Was it like the public works, the stuff that we had going with you guys?
That is one of the contracts that we have. So that has been a multi-year contract for $150,000. But we, you know, we're still even invoicing for fourth quarter right now. A lot of the projects are with like Board of Health. We have ward redistricting work. We've had CBPG zoning. So it's a variety of work with municipal clients and as well as county departments who have an interagency agreement.
You'll exceed that forecast after I get done talking.
Department of Development was another one too, for systems with site strategies.
Okay, any other further questions? Mike?
You mentioned briefly that the 2023 adjusted budget includes, assumes that all of the vacancies are filled for this year. How many vacancies do you currently have and how, and how long do you anticipate to fill up?
Right. So to clarify, the adjusted budget is, that factor of 132 was built on occupied positions only. Our vacancies right now is 1 FTE. But there's some other factors within our salaries budget that we don't think OBM was fully funded us for. For instance, a merit program, which is something that our agency has entertained the last several years with an average 3% issued half-year. So. They did not ask for our feedback on the 132 that they put into the budget.
I think it was really to make us whole based on the current, currently occupied positions. And I failed to introduce our co-op from University of Cincinnati, Sean Kidd. So he was actually, he did not start until January. So his, his salary or his, you know, earnings are not calculated into that $132,000 either.
Oh, okay.
That's an example. You know, we're, he wasn't sitting here in December, but did not start till January.
So Jennifer, thank you so much. As usual, you do a really good job explaining all this. The senior planner position has been vacant. What, what's the problem in getting that filled?
Well, I can let Mary speak to more of the details of that. It's just right now, even right now, we don't have the funding. But I'll let you speak to the.
It's been, it's been, you know, being careful of what funding we have and what we could commit to in terms of a hiring. We did go through interviews with senior planners and we didn't find the candidate that we felt would best meet our needs. And even as we went through those interviews, we realized that we may need a principal planner versus a senior planner. The, the previous senior planner that had left, he was on the trajectory to be a principal planner. And given those skills that he had, we think that might be a better placement than a senior planner at this point. So it's just going through the PRC and going through all those calculations and figuring out what that job description was and what salary got assigned to that. It was really getting all of that done now. But I think, you know, given, I dreamed that we would have one in place before we started these, you know, four planning projects. But I could, I think Director Wong can speak to the challenge in finding the right qualified candidates for some of these positions, so.
Funny. I, for me, it's, it's, there's all these students coming out of CSU.
Yeah, and I think entry level, yeah, entry level is great. I mean, these are fantastic interns that we've then hired as full-time employees. So that, it's just that more senior experience, you know, to really lead projects. I'll just, you know, we, we compete with the private market and there's many firms. So I, I think, you know, the, the challenges of the public sector and sort of how, how to compete is.
So the other, just a couple more questions if I can, that we had 14 applications for the grants for the cities to do planning work. I, I think that's, so there's a demand out there that I really think as, I think we need to, to accommodate. It's important to me to regionalize and help communities. That's what I think.
Absolutely.
My role is sitting in this chair and my other chair as well. But, um, so I'd like to see this budget, you to maybe ask for or include additional funding for the grants. Because communities need that. It's important for them to perform well as a county. It lifts us up. Okay, so in OBM, like they have no information about what to expect in terms of contracts and revenue coming in from communities, right? They don't delve into any of the detail.
No.
That's, okay.
So I think to that point, which we've mentioned before, you know, if, if there's an opportunity to realize some of those dollars that we give back to general fund and having some spending authority that would help then our budget be a little bit more stable than maybe something, yes, to come back towards. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the bylaws. There's been a document circulated.
Yes, um, so in your packet, you would have received the redline version. These are suggested, um, updates to the bylaws. Um, our bylaws have been originally adopted in nineteen eighty-nine, have seen several amendments over the years. Unfortunately Wesley, um, was not able to be with us today, but Reed Stuffman is here with us from the legal department. So I don't know what the best way to do this. I think kind of overall, some things that were suggested as possible additions that are not in there. Um, we don't, we're silent on, um, term limits. We're silent on attendance policy. Uh, when we did go through, um, appointments last year and trying to look at the language of who qualifies as a potential candidate for an appointment from the county executive and how it worked with alternates, there was a little bit of fuzziness to our language. So I think some of it's really been, um, the law department and I really looking at trying to clean up some of the language so that it's very clear. Um, so our bylaws do state that we need to discuss these before we have a vote. So it would be a discussion today. I would ask, I will send out this redline version as a separate document and ask you to review that. And then, uh, we would bring it back to the board, uh, for further discussion and/or adoption at our next meeting. If I don't, if anybody had a chance to look through it or had any questions, but.
I just have, and I'm not gonna, it's a long enough meeting, I guess, but what I want to talk about, you took out the whole, potentially the section about getting recommendation, um, for alternates and in writing, all that, all those sections came out, designating approval of alternates. I found that.
Well, it jumped out. And I think what part of it, and I don't have a, I could pull it up, but I think part of it was, it became clear that the alternate designation was for the mayor of the city of Cleveland and for council staff, not all members. So it was a bit confusing the way that it was written. It almost read that every, there is a way to say that if, say Mayor Sellers can't be here, that there is a way in writing, there was in the bylaw to say that he could have an alternate attend. But it was a bit confusing between the alternate designees of the mayor and the council versus that. And so it's a point of obviously discussion and, um, look into.
So parity.
Right, so it was kind of, right.
Yeah, so we have a, you know, absentee policy and it's not fair to the mayors perhaps. They can't appoint somebody and.
Right, so I think that's where it was pretty much, you know, if the mayors were, did not have an alternate name. So if they were, they, you know, there was no attendance policy, so if they weren't able to be here, they just were absent on that meeting. So I think a lot of it's kind of those structures of how structured do we want it? How much room do we want to leave for interpretation versus being very clear, um, going forward.
More is just being fair, you know?
Do you think that the mayor potentially of that respected city, then he does potentially his planning director to be his alternate?
Or she.
Or she, I'm sorry.
We've got a lot of people.
I think it's a great suggestion.
Yeah.
I, I, I had to miss one meeting because of an emergency at one time. You know, something just came up during the day, uh, you know, the police department. I wasn't able to be here. It'd be nice to have an alternate.
So I think to that point, you know, if we have an alternate, is it the same designated person? Or can it be someone? I think that's, because I think part of it too is who could, who's able to vote on behalf of the city.
Some of us, we, we, some of us are reading. The alternate wouldn't even have to be from our own government. And not every city government is structured. So, you know, you may have, you know, whoever's the head of planning in particular, be a higher position in one government than another, so. I would want to leave some flexibility among seats that bring out alternates and regional seats. Or how they're.
So I think this, you know, if we didn't have such a long agenda today, I think there was hopefully an opportunity to have some of this. But I, I do think, I would encourage you to go through and, you know, put comments in there. I'll send a word document with track changes. Um, and then come back and really have a, kind of more detailed discussion. Did you want to say something, Mayor Sellers?
Probably different from my colleagues here. I think that, uh, I think Sunny and Mary make a good point here. But for us, I feel like we made a commitment to do it, right? We didn't have to do this, right?
Sure.
So it could have been a number of people. So if you're gonna commit to it, yeah, there's gonna be some times where you, that you won't make it, right? So I don't think it's an extraordinary amount of times that you're not gonna come. Unless you just, you're elected to.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the way that the current language is in there, I think it's more than five consecutive meetings without notice of, I mean, we, we only have five meetings.
That's a whole year.
So if I don't see you, then, you know.
The other thing it is that you have to have an interest in this, right? And I don't think anybody sitting here really doesn't have an interest in it.
It's you, you giving your time to be part of this, um, yeah, board, so, yeah, I think it's, it's important.
Well, back in the day, in the old form of government, when the county commissioner sat up there, we seldom saw the county commissioner sit up there. He was, you know, heavily involved with their alternates as they took turns rotating. And back then, the regional, uh, mayors were basically elected by their regions. Uh, when the county government changed, everything changed. But I agree with you, Mayor Sellers, if, if you accept this appointment, then the people that should be attending the meeting, too many times alternates become the front person. I understand, but the city of Cleveland and stuff like that, that. But again, the rest of us, I, I think that positions are important and the person that accepts that appointment should be in, in attending the meetings.
Case for North Homestead, somebody I was sitting in here would not have known how that had tracked over. You, that would have been brand new to them.
And I think, you know, you each do represent a planning region still. So you, you represent, um, several communities, uh, and that's part of our bylaws is that map of those regions. And so, um, that is still a piece of it, so.
Mayor Sellers and I just put some comments out there for you guys to consider.
I appreciate it. No, I mean, that's, we do want to have that conversation, so.
I, I, I think those were great points too. And, and, you know, everything that I was saying too, there'd be no intentions of me missing any of these meetings. I, I, I.
But things do come up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had an emergency. And two, I don't just review these by myself and sit through with my office. I have our economic development commissioner sitting down with me, Paul Marnichak. I have my executive assistant sitting with me and we review all of this stuff before I do come here. So it's not just, I know it, it's, you know, what are, are input by committee.
Okay, uh, there was one other item in the.
Something else? It's just, I always, I, I just, when we look at this, are we happy with the planning regions? These have been in existence forever. Always, I've always looked at these and thought, do they still fit? Do we want to keep them? So this might be a time just to, just to take a look at that.
That's a good point. They are.
These regions are actually utilized for environmental also.
Everything's consistent, I don't know.
Yeah, they do use our, they use our.
And where are they inconsistent? You know, I don't know, you know, perhaps, I don't know. It's just, I'm fine with it, but I can't always look at.
But it is important. They're, they're attached to our bylaws and so we do speak to the planning regions.
And life changes, you know, a little bit.
Some have many, many communities, some have fewer, so, see if Cleveland has their own.
And the, the only thing if I can is, um, section five point oh one B, there's a comment about unfortunately, we might have to change something that is not consistent with our county code. You never know. I mean, the county code might be able to.
Can change.
I just wanted to bring that up.
We're not boxed in necessarily.
I think there was an item here referencing term limits.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I don't know if that's necessarily applicable. Just because there's a, it seems like the county executive turns around in every few years, right? And they have been making separate appointments.
Exactly.
So that, I mean, that was a point of conversation because other, uh, boards do have that in place. So it's a matter of do we want to put that or we don't? You know, that's obviously up to the board to decide.
Who's kind of got that now with us, that's a good point.
Okay, any other for the comments, questions? Okay, if you could take this back and, uh, we'll keep it in the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on to the next item.
Okay, and I'll try to make this quick. Look, we took great on time, very fast, thank you. Um, if you recall, uh, you approved us getting under contract with a consultant to lead us through a strategic planning retreat. Uh, we had a hundred percent participation from the team. It was an absolutely terrific day.
Great.
Uh, we had a lot of great thoughts, ideas, um, buy-in, consensus. It was really terrific. So, um, you know, I really do see this as our north star moving forward for the next three to five years. We still have a few things that we need to finalize, but I wanted to at least share with you where we are at. So, um, the agency did not currently, or previously have a vision statement. So that is something we felt very important to institute. Uh, we did have a mission statement that was done back in 2015, so we thought that was time to revisit. Uh, we identified core values and strategic imperatives and we're working on strategic initiatives for 23. Uh, we have been hanging up many, many flip charts in our map room, um, getting input from staff even after the retreat and really trying to get to consensus on where we're at. So I did send this to you two weeks ago, just to make sure everyone had plenty of time to see this. But the proposed, uh, new vision statement is inspiring all of our communities to thrive. You have to go, thank you. And there's, yeah, so that was the, the new vision statement recommendation. And the revised mission statement is to advance Cuyahoga County's social, economic, and environmental health through equitable community planning. So I don't know if, thank you, I don't know if anybody had any initial thoughts on this. Uh, we are asking for adoption, uh, on this, these statements today. So I would open it up to any questions or comments.
Great. I, I can check in, yeah. Fantastic job. Very pithy and to the point and, yeah, I, I like it.
I was wrong, it was 2012.
Where did you guys have the retreat?
Uh, we had it at the watershed, I always say Rott watershed stewardship center, uh, out in Parma. Parma Metro Mark's facility.
And who facilitated for you?
Uh, Ron Bauer with, uh, Brick Path Group, Brick Path Group. He was really great. So he's followed up with us since pro bono and just made sure we're doing okay and how is it coming along and really do want this to all be living and breathing. We've talked about revisiting these imperatives and initiatives monthly. We're gonna be assigning duties to managers to then implement specific action items that are needed. We have a long list of ones that didn't rise to the top for, uh, 23, but they're equally as important and we'll see those moving forward in future years.
Nice, okay. Good job.
So you need a motion. Sunny, you make the motion?
Okay, me, I'll make a motion to adopt this.
I second, I second Sunny's motion.
Thank you.
Motion moved and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries.
I just wanted to quickly, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, core values, this is what we came up with for our team. Inclusion, collaboration, communication, accountability, respect, and excellence. We have been going through a very, uh, as my managers can attest to, very intense process to define each of these and define them clearly and concisely so that we all live and breathe those every day. Um, so we now have that hanging in the, the map room in our office, getting staff input because we want consensus on these, which will really help us shape, um, the initiatives going forward. So these are the imperatives that we've developed as a result of that. Cultivate employees, enhance product and service delivery, advance education and awareness, influence policy advocacy and innovation, incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion. So from these then become tasks of how do we do each of those that will become the strategic initiatives. So we are getting very close and I just want to publicly thank my staff and my team. They have been fantastic in working through this process. Uh, if anybody who's here, if anyone wanna talk about the process or anything.
Well, if not for Mary, our agency would not have had that reflective exercise. So I thank her for leading this charge.
Thank you. Okay, last slide. Okay, just quickly administrative updates, board appointments in 23. Um, Councilwoman, uh, Simon and Councilwoman Conwell were reappointed by Council President Jones. So thank you for serving again. Um, the county executive recommendations for mayoral appointments are going to be introduced to county council on Tuesday, February fourteenth. And then in terms of policy updated, updates that we need to happen, um, the county employee updated their handbook with at least fifteen updates last year, uh, in the county handbook. So we are trying to look at that and look at ours and see where we need to, uh, update our policies and procedures. And a few of the ones, we'd obviously talked about the bylaws, looking at our compensation policy, probation, period, vacation and sick time and remote work. So as we change one, it changes the other. So we will be, future meetings bringing forth, uh, additional policy recommendations for changes that will need to be adopted.
Okay.
I just said, for all those who might not be appointed again, the mayors, I'm not gonna say who unless you want to, um, I'm grateful for your service and everything you've done to contribute to this planning commission. It's much appreciated. And, um, those are my comments. I'm sorry, can we have advanced notice because I would have had the same proclamation.
I echo those, the comments also.
Yeah, for sure. And that includes, I guess, can, am I able to say Pam, but regular mayor Pam Boats won't be back and she was integral to so many facets of our, you know, functioning here, including, you know, a couple times we had to get her director and that's not an easy task. And so I just want to say thank you. It's been great serving, but those who won't be back in this capacity.
Anything further? New business, old business?
Nothing, nothing.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very efficient.
Yes.